United States of America. I consider the level of rights that one makes individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much again for coming tonight to the meeting. All of your presentations. First on our name is proclamation presentation. Tonight we will recognize the line as a person of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And this we will have vote as Julian Wheeler Chair, Pierce County Accessibility Committee's Accessible Communities Advisor to me. Uh, he is zooming. First is the chairman. It seems as this is where they're actually called here.
Um, given the technology, it might help if you came downstairs.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear me, Julian?
Yes. And I can hear myself, which is weird.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to hear you and to have you here with us tonight. And we want to present this proclamation to you on behalf of your committee, on behalf of all of us here on the council, and certainly the citizens and residents of the city of Lakewood. Whereas on July 26, 1990, President George H. W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. And whereas this legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate, the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. And whereas on July 26, we will celebrate the anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers, changing perceptions, and increasing full participation in community life. And whereas the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed and vigilant to continue our efforts to fully implement the ADA. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council declares the month of July as the anniversary month of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And we recognize the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion, and we recommit our efforts to ADA compliance. Reclaim this 19th day of July, 2021, Don Anderson Mayor. And I'm gonna visually hand you the proclamation and thank you for your steadfast commitment to working with us to ensure that all residents have opportunities for full participation through the Americans with Disabilities Act. So floor is yours.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I recognize the voice.
Yeah, it's Jason.
Yes. Well, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Wheeler and others. And I understand this means that the mayor is away from the chambers right now, but I wanted to thank you. It's good to see all of you young people on the council back to work together. I'm glad to see that the mayor and the deputy mayor got the band back together like Jake and Elwood Blues and the Blues Brothers. My name is Julian Wheeler, Chair of the Pierce County Accessible Communities Advisory Committee. I couldn't be there today because I was advised with my history of chemotherapy that I probably should give it more time before I appear in person, at least trying to push it for me. So I wanted to, you know, thank for the proclamation and, you know, commemorating the time that President Bush signed the ADA into law. I'd like seeing a wide range of people advance the principles of accessibility and to help people with disabilities, among others. Indeed, our committee has been acting under the Accessible Communities Act of 2010 to help make Pierce County more accessible. What I'm doing tonight is actually raising the visibility of our Pierce County ACAC, and thereby I hope to raise the viability of the accessible communities phenomenon interstate of Washington. Now, I don't have a view of the clock, so I'm gonna have to accept that on faith when my time is up. But I just wanted to say we are gonna have our next meeting on Tuesday, September 14. It's still gonna be on Zoom, because to me, that's all about accessibility, and thank you for this remote attendance option. Uh, the ACAC is looking for new members and new ideas and to help fund projects, accessibility projects in Pierce County. Now whether that's a volunteer group, like a nonprofit, that wants to put a ramp in through a community building, or it's been, you know, as part of a budget process, but it makes a cut. I want to make sure that whether it's in Lakewood or Tacoma or Ording or Eatonville or Fife, anywhere in Pierce County, that people have the ability to benefit from the life of the community, like in Graham, Washington, where we put in an echoing ramp, mobility ramp, so the people in wheelchair can ride horses. I look forward to helping Lakewood become more accessible, even if it is in the form of gaining access to our waters, our Lake, Gravia Lake, or Fort Stilcom Lake, rather, Lake Stilcom, whether it's access to our beautiful canopy, access to ideas. I want to thank each of you for helping me out over the years. I've had some interesting ideas myself, and whether it's to create a Lakewood Disability Commission, or a few years ago, I suggested a Lakewood Urban Forestry Commission. When the trees were taken down in front of the post office, accessibility comes in many forms, and I just wanted to encourage everyone to bring in the outsiders. And I think that this is a great time to help advance disability and accessibility principles. Thank you very much. My spirits are up, and I sense so is my time. Thank you.
We now turn to the section of the next agenda. All members of the audience may comment on items that any matter to the assistance of the comment period. Comments on other disagreements or groups who have at least three members identified themselves accordingly. Many designated speakers will have full attendance, see them at the group. We also invite our proclamation, I approve to allow public comment. We assume you would like to provide live public comments. You will need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 1253-215-872, or the meeting ID 868-7263-2373, or visit zoom.us, the meeting ID 868-7263-2373. Upon marrying the meeting, please include name, other chosen individuals, race, age, creed, call upon, and I will do my best to move my way with the seat third to ensure that you call upon your own best interests. Outside of public comments, all things on Zoom will continue to have a vote personally in the meeting, without being acknowledged and whitethought of, may be needed, so that when you call upon your public comment group. So I will first call on those signing sheet physically. Respect their time tonight, and we will follow their strong strength of hands. So first, on the signing sheet for the public comment group tonight.
On space, Lakewood Historical Society.
Let me pull my piece.
Little bit of history. Don Anderson was talking about the possibility of Fort Stilcom becoming part of Lakewood. In 1998, so I have, he was the founder of Lakewood Historical Society. Got the national designation. For Fort Stilcom. Ninety-eight, or eighty-eight, ninety-eight. I did the same thing for the people of our town. Mine was rejected. It couldn't have been ever returned. Nineteen ninety-eight, Lakewood Historical Society was also there. Southern Avenue was the first president. Two thousand and six, Lakewood got its first museum. It's Paul Museum. East Southern, the Gormont Center. Two, two thousand and nineteen, we went to the other side, which was the Harris Restaurant, the lobby of the local theater. We had our second grand opening last Saturday. Once City Hall was open. I put in a historical display out of the lot. Themselves came from Fort Stilcom. Through various stages that I had permission to do. Also, a lot of photos of the big white footprints of the track, other related Lakewood historical stories. Those are still off in the long. And throughout the time, Mike Abin was a archaeologist at Fort Stilcom. At the time, his college. Had gathered sixty-two storage boxes full of artifacts from Lakewood that he dug up through the stands of Fort Stilcom. Indian artifacts all around Lakewood. Can you, for short, read your truth? Anyway, those artifacts, when Mike Abin died, the college gave them to the Burton Museum, Seattle. So all of that stuff was in the archives there, which are buried in the bowels of the place, and probably will never be seen again. I tried to get access to some of that material through John Simpson. And we found out that they wanted a dollar, a hundred dollars per aisle to rent an individual art from those sixty-two boxes. I'm very proud. I doubt whether they could even find them. Anyway, I am interested in saving all the artifacts that we can find from Lakewood, obviously with permission to date. I'm going to have a reverse so, a number of other individual places in Lakewood. My comments will lead me toward Don Anderson, whatever help he needs with regard to Fort Stilcom. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm sure it tests you as well for the benefits. Thank you very much. Next on our list is someone with record.
Good evening. My name is Alice, and I'm new here. And I'm here to advocate for change in the works of making significant trees. A good deal of talk about oak small days centers around whether the city was issued a permit for planting of trees and what constitutes a legitimate felony of certain trees. Why? Why shouldn't this be an issue at all? First of all, question, we will be in mind that the environment that the terrorists created is a very dark, is very dark, and must be preserved. To remove the canopy from such a system destroys the balance of our ecosystems, and our shelter beneath it. Stands the nature of hopes, while other disappearing ecosystems are increasingly scarce, and with their demise comes the world totally in full decline. Not quite good job, Melissa. By issuing permits, we are not forgiving to the upset or lack of illness. As our homes, the mind system that they support, vegetation in general, and our purpose of the way this is rise, always previous to our world to us for currently living at close. And species become extinct by the study of age. How most the younger butterfly species has been run in these years, perhaps not a problem in progress, but an indicator of this change. Yes, man has argued, charge of setting the world in general in the name of progress. Nor our houses, some of which are mainly wooden, is growing up. We're cutting through veils as the easiest way to repair and inspect it. Do you want to be part of the project? Oaks remaining in the park, which are stationally empty. This more than even with this certain income is asked to develop our community. We consider why we give that to using another tree from issues of issued permits for by non-homes. Let us rethink change on the way to how we can do this. Thank you for your attention.
Go on, sign sheet, senior manager.
Hello, council members. I'm the senior manager in the county of Lakewood, like a proud citizen of Pierce, and that's my side. So let's see. I'm here today to personally acknowledge most urgent treatment of the big priorities. I don't know what else to update first on many things that happened to Gary Oaks since last evening. A large area by customer, I don't know, said it's been horrifically mutilated by utilities company. I mean, really bad. I thought maybe they're getting the whole thing down, but they left there and put a humongous fire hole. On Saturday, a property owner who passed, uh, attorney application for subdivision on, uh, upriver, was cutting down legally a very large Gary Oak tree. I mean, really large. I have a picture that, um, pictures of these that I submitted in the written comments. Um, they stopped when I asked for permits, and Ms. Brunel, today told me that indeed it was legal, and at first she thought that there would be a fine, um, but then she, well, I'll say that there, on rarely, multiple Gary Oaks in danger because of the proposal to make a part of the consent. And there are several irregularities with that application, which is already been approved, that I have been communicating with people on city paths. Um, so the kind of the new warehouse that was on fifty Street that has at least ten Gary Oaks that are quite large, most of them are over twenty inches. And when they're two hundred years old, they're about twenty-seven inches at rest height, so those are definitely old ones. Uh, today, however, I'm likely focused in this summit on a series of issues related to the rule of law that had been raised by this attempt by the, by the woman to cut down that tree. Uh, at first, I was so frustrated, you know, in planning offices, that we'd be fined, and that indeed it was legal, uh, because it was without a permit. And then later in the day, she informed me that, uh, when I asked what confinement would be, she told me that, quote, "We do retroactively permit products in scenarios such as this." And so I wanted to ask, where exactly in the code is there provision for retroactive permits? Because I couldn't find anything like that in the code. And no matter what the circumstances, unless a tree poses a truly imminent danger to life or structure, permits should not be issued retroactively, even if something exists. This is a matter of the rule of law. One cannot benefit from having broken the law. This sets a clear precedent. Other people will see that she did that, and other people think, oh, they'll just give me a retroactive permit. Fines are central, and fines have to be substantial, so it's not just part of the building, uh, budget, right? And in addition, by creating a home attack, she also undermined entire reasons why about forty people commented on this subdivision application. And you must be aware of that, of course, I am. So we can't, we cannot allow Lakewood to be ruled by those who break the law.
Okay, next on our list is Amelia S. Vito.
Hello, my name is Amelia S. Vito. Uh, I'm a huge City Council member. I'm the city manager, I don't know if you're married or something. I just wanted to talk about the body cams. And I wanted to say that I actually, I also stand with the taking care of the trees and not tearing them down. And it was sad to see that tree go beyond our custom. That tree was big and beautiful, it was right in front of the school. Today, I would like to say I'm here to speak, speak on being in favor of the body cams. The body cam rule that should be implemented is more blocking or to be on the body cam dash cam vehicle footage. If an officer does not comply, then a precaution violation should occur. This means not keeping, community service for the first event, second events will no longer be under force. The LPD should be held to a higher standard. On May 3, 2020, Said Wakim was started by Mike White. While he was speeding, almost causing a collision, Said Wakim should have never pulled, had been pulled over, because every citizen that drives down that road has to roll past the stop sign just to be uncomprehensible. And you might each one of you to drive down the avenue of Southwest to Stilcom Drive Southwest and see for yourself. While he purposely blocks the dash cam video recording on, on oncoming fellow officer's vehicle. While he is testing out Said Wakim as he is complying, other officer calls in saying all people are complying. Said Wakim says he doesn't want to die. Not even five minutes in, and while they shoot Said, he never runs away. He stands with arms crossed, watching Said Wakim gasp his last breath. As another black officer arrives on the scene, he also makes sure he parks where cameras can see Said. Then another veteran officer parks his car in front of the black officer's dash cam. Mike White is currently still policing Lakewood residents. I believe that the City Council should open an investigation on the death of Said Wakim. Our own chief of police has made negative comments on body cams, like they did not report the officer's feelings or thoughts. This is one of the main reasons you should not be a chief of police. If you want to fix the problem with policing, the opening demographic should look like our city. Fifty percent white and fifty percent people of color. They should live in our city, and those who don't should do community service to get to know the community. And just to give a definition, our quick justification is the process whereby the character of urban areas changed by wealth or keep, moving in, improving housing, and attracting businesses, displacing current inhabitants in the process. And there's so much more that I want to say, but most of all, we need to hold the officer accountable for what he did. Have y'all reached out to the family? Have y'all, have any of y'all? Just because they're from North Carolina doesn't mean that you don't talk to them. You gotta show your support and your love to them. This is a resident that died here, that was in the care of our city, and he died in the care of our officers. Thank you.
Next on the list, please, it's, uh, Jenna or Lena, please.
Hello, uh, I'm Shaquille. Sorry about the name, anybody. I'm a new here resident in Seattle, I've appeared on recent comments about comment regarding the scary oak trees, uh, in one of the heat waves we all experienced in the week started. So major reasons is that those scary oak trees must be protected as maximum as be possible, nor is it allowed to be to be that. With the memory of the heat down that affected some of our bus, maybe it will pay to us this one, its consequences have been tragically inherent. The Pierce County Medical Center's offices in Birmingham, the heat has killed twenty-three residents, account. Or in the state health officials, Said will be sentenced to nine deaths. Can county council, a dozen, and rich county has reported over two hundred deaths. EPA research shows that as a result of climate change, heat waves will increase in frequency variation intensity, uh, and intensity of the damage. As the detriment of one tax protection continues, we can start these trends, uh, as well. EPA research also, also shows that trees are still moving abilities under impact of the heat levels, everybody is shaving the process from that consideration. Large trees like the scary oaks are assuming this combination is where they are different. Tragic deaths we have seen in our west, those who knew the lives lost. For a long time, we see in the future critical tool agents, which are the area to cut down on the furthest developed, which adds to materials that are concrete areas, rather than helping crew down. The city of Lakewood must do everything in its powers to prevent such loss of life from happening, but it's minutes onwards. And that's such an argument, since in that Lakewood must protect the scary oak trees from being cut and killed, nor is it meant otherwise, the lives of the citizens, and life of the recently early graduates in the Midwest. There are will be future heat waves, and people will die if you do not act to help them. Thank you for your time.
Next on the list, James Dunlop.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment. My name is James Dunlop. I am a resident of Lakewood. Lakewood has many phases, as you can see from its online presence. It has a website, with some aspects of the website, and to talk about planning regulations, other aspects, we'll talk about its face, and its trees, and its community, and other other aspects of its website, which talk about the business opportunities that Lakewood presents. Now, there is a website that seems to be under the control of Lakewood, that is talking about what Lakewood is doing, um, which is the, um, buildyourbetterhere.com. Now, buildyourbetterhere.com, I've got a quote from it. It says, "If you're looking for better," I mean, that's what it says, Sid, it's really not safe this time on. "If you're looking for better, we're building better here in Lakewood. Better looks like affordable starter homes in established neighborhoods, or lakefront living on some of the most luxurious properties in the state. Pick your lake, Lakewood has seven. Better is also streamlined business climate with business-friendly policies and development incentives. Lakewood invites investment and bulldozes barriers. How will you build your better here?" Bulldoze is an extremely emotive word. According to Mary Webster, as a transitive verb, it has three meanings, which perhaps tell us how the barriers can be removed. One, to coerce or restrain by threats, bullying. Two, to Two, to move, clear, gouge out, or level off by pushing with, or as if, with a bulldozer. Three, to force insensitivity, to force insensitively or ruthlessly. So, the overall message seems to be from this website, that we've done all this stuff, and you can move, clear, gouge out, or level off, whatever you like. Tree coats, we are fair game. Got a zoning problem, we'll boat, we'll bulldoze it into something friendly and industrial. American Lake Garden Tract, Historic School, Gary Oaks, no problem, bulldozers barricades. So, I think there's an opposite problem here. And Lakewood has to consider the impression it wants to give. Is it really about bulldozing, about coercing, restraining, and bullying? If it's not, maybe the city should consider changing the wording on its website. Thank you.
Next on the list tonight, Teresa Parsons.
Hi, my name is Teresa Parsons, and I am speaking on behalf of the trees as well. And I think it's about time we came up with a policy to save these trees. I'm not a political person at all, I'm not far right, I'm not far left, I'm not the type of person that would necessarily get involved in this kind of thing. But what I'm witnessing currently regarding trees in Lakewood is, simply put, horrifying. We need to preserve these trees. My family's lived in Lakewood for all of half a century, and our little trees grow steep. My grandparents' house had oaks growing through its deck. The architect considered the land around the home and built the house with them in mind. This should be something we ask the landowners to this day. Mature trees are a benefit to, to the property, to its neighbors, and to the wildlife of the area. I understand private property, my husband and I are homeowners, and we, we, we also own a small business and a building. But we believe the trees need protecting, just the same. It should be more preferable to take down these trees. Fines should be larger, and need to be larger, especially for mature trees. Tree removals shouldn't occur without certified arborist sign up. If the tree is healthy and not damaging the building, no removal should be allowed. Neighbors should be notified when these trees are coming down. Everybody should be involved. This is not the city I dreamed it would be after my grandmother fought so hard for it, Operation in nineteen ninety-six. Vacant lots, dilapidated buildings, tree removals for a parking lot, and detention warehouses. I'm certainly glad she's not here to witness the current destruction of what used to be such an ideal place to grow up, but I know she's having me invited. Trees are for the people, for the animals, and for the city. Please save them, and strive to be better because it matters to your citizens. Thanks, and I'd be happy to talk about new policies. I appreciate your time.
Kyle Jollyboy.
My name is Kyle Jollyboy. My family moved to Lakewood in Tacoma in nineteen seventy-nine. This was Villa Plaza. This is still Villa Plaza to me. My father died in nineteen ninety-one. He fought for Lakewood becoming a city because he knew what it would be. He had a business in Lakewood for over fifty years before he passed. You see, I have serapology. Serapology is lack of oxygen to the brain. By you guys destroying the trees in Lakewood, you guys are taking the oxygen. Secondly, your city is one of the only cities in Tacoma area that does not allow cannabis shops in the district, in the city limits. And under ADA, cannabis works very well for a person like me. So, I grew up with strip joints in Lakewood. I even attended them. I went to them. I enjoyed growing up. You guys don't have those anymore. And I'm sure I know why. But you guys won't even look at cannabis as, as a factor to those that you did a proclamation for. I've never been in, in the city council here before. I came here because I was invited. I stand up in Tacoma against L and G. They're trying to put an eight million gallon tank in my backyard. And now all I see in Lakewood is warehouses, where people used to ride their bikes and play. How embarrassing for a city to cave to the giant corporations. They don't have lively, they don't produce memories. They don't have feelings. They can't take a walk in Lakewood. You guys are destroying the future of Lakewood by this. I think you guys need to stop and take a pause. And think about what you're doing, because your legacy is this. How do you want to be remembered in twenty years? My friend was Crystal Brain. She was killed by a Tacoma police chief in two thousand and four. I have a Pierce County sheriff attacking me now. I don't know what this world's coming to after this virus. It needs to change. And I thank you very much.
Next on the list, Steve Zarek Seibel.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eric Seibel, and I'm here to ask that Lakewood revise its tree retention policy to grant protective status to Gary oak trees everywhere within the municipality. I'm affiliated with the Lakewood Gary Oak Forest Insurgency. I'm also a member of the Tacoma Art and Art Society, and I work on all these groups to affect positive outcomes for our community. There is a long-term solution to the tree problem that the city council may consider. The city is updating its twenty twenty output of the July elections year. This will be an opportunity to revise city policy and run a new city code to protect Gary oak trees throughout the city. This will be a significant way to protect Gary oak trees and the town. And speaking from the heart, it's clear now that climate change is here, and it is the emergency that it was always predicted to be. It's been difficult to understand this because climate change is gradual, gradual, and then all the worse. So, here we are. We have a new reality that we have to deal with. And in such a situation, it's prudent, I feel to be as conservative as possible. We don't have information about the actual effects on our community, how this will manifest through our population. Conservative approach is warranted caution. On the other side of conservatism, also is conservation. These trees represent the wealth of our community, the one of the wealth, one of our beautiful legacies, our priceless legacy. There's only fifteen percent approximately of, of these trees remaining in their natural habitat, where they once ranged up and down the west coast, all the way up to Canada. Thank you very much for your time. Again, I would ask that the city consider revising this tree retention policy to grant protective status to the Gary oak trees.
Next, Shavani Nishel.
I'm having difficulty to detect the words. Hello, my name is Shavani Nishel. I'm a resident of Lakewood, and I testified today about the goals the city council has as it pertains to public safety and transparency. The people of Lakewood are concerned that the council has forgotten its vision to represent all its people. A goal set by this council pertaining to public safety was that the city of Lakewood be one of the safest cities in Washington State. In spite of Lakewood having one of the largest police departments in the state, and employing more full-time officers. Sorry. Uh, employing more full-time law enforcement. Ninety-four percent of other communities in Washington State have a lower crime rate than Lakewood. Lakewood actually has one of the highest violent crime rates in the nation. In Washington State, the chance of being a victim of a violent crime is one in every three hundred and forty people. But in Lakewood, the chances of being a victim of violent crime is one in every one hundred and thirty-one people. Whether the government of Lakewood has them, whatever the government of Lakewood has them, to achieve is both not working. Transparency is important. After reviewing the information that was released regarding the police involved shooting Said Hakim, it states that the LETSCA is required to give weekly updates on the status of the investigation and to incidents which law enforcement officers use them in force. I have not been able to find any updates on this matter since March ninth of this year, but Michael Wiley is back controlling the streets of Lakewood. All individuals should feel safe in Lakewood, but I'm not, knowing Wiley's history of being an aggressor. Michael Wiley was found to violate fourteen of Thomas, the Thomas family's civil rights in two thousand thirteen, when Leonard Thomas was murdered by Lakewood's SWAT. Leonard Thomas was complying with the police when Michael Wiley used explosives to break down the Thomas family's back door. While entering the house, Michael Wiley shot the family dog three times, killing it. Embers reported saying, quote, "That was a million dollar shot," end quote, "when Mr. Thomas was shot and killed while holding his four-year-old son." Mike Zarro, who was the chief of police here in Lakewood, was also found to have been trying to cover up evidence in the Thomas case for the policeman involved. He was promoted to chief after that. Mayor Anderson, Deputy Mayor Wayland, Councilmember Bookie, Councilmember Moss, and Councilmember Brett Standard were on the council when Leonard was murdered and Zarro was promoted. The lowest paid officer here in Lakewood, after benefits, makes around a hundred and four thousand dollars a year. The police chief, after benefits, makes two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Since the people of Lakewood gave so much for our police, the police should work to, the police should work for us, and the police should establish good relationships with all residents of Lakewood, instead of having the people fear them. The safest communities don't have more police statistics to prove that the safest community has more resources. I ask that you please reopen the investigation of the murder of Said Hakim. Thank you.
I state law investigation is independent, and is still ongoing. Next, Karen Trueheart, please.
It's funny that you gave extra time to somebody else, though. Extra five seconds, if that's what.
I'd be sure to make sure I sense the law.
Oh, I'm from Lakewood. Been a resident of Lakewood for forty-five years. I'm a different subject to bring it up tonight, and that is Western State Hospital. I find it very surprising that the community is not aware of what's going on at the hospital. I've spoken to dozens and dozens of people, and when I bring that up, they have a very puzzled face. What do you mean it's becoming a forensic hospital? I haven't heard anything about it. The publicity on this has been next to nil. There was an article in the last Sunday's paper, but that was after the hospital had finally had gone on over a year. I'm very concerned about it. We've had many old people there since eighteen seventy-one. But in eighteen seventy-one, the hospital was constructed, this was prayer. And now we have a school, western hospital, high school, we have a park, south of the hospital, we have a residential area, north of the hospital, and we're talking about expansion. I wonder, what other sites were there? Was anything else investigated, other than the place that the hospital has been for over a hundred and fifty years? If we're spending almost two billion dollars to water the hospital, might be off hook someplace else, instead of the heart and the heart of our community. Certainly, there are other areas that are not in the desert area, but perhaps don't have a high school across the street or a park across the street, not in an area where they could still find workers, but not to endanger other people. Western State is not on the best reputation as far as looking out for patients. Many times, there have been people that have escaped from the hospital, and now we're talking about criminally insane people, not similarly insane people. I think it's a very serious issue, and you, as our representatives of Lakewood, I would hope you'd stand up for the community. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Melissa Knox. Robbie or Robert, how will you get that any sign that they don't speak, but came by the wrong to? So those are all individuals who have signed up physically, speaking for a common period. If there's anyone that I did not get a chance to sign up for the life of the rest of the council, we are feeling so. If not, I will turn to the many folks on Zoom, assistants are, are third, and I assume we got two individuals there. I'll call on the first one, which has a telephone on top of the list, and the third is two five three nine six four two one seven three. Please state your name for the record. In verse.
You've been unmuted. If you can hear us, please state your name for the record. So we're not getting any audio in, so we're going to move on to the next person and see if that works.
Next person to the side to speak, Teresa Marie King.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Teresa King. I'm a lifelong resident and homeowner in Lakewood, and I'm speaking to request a review of the Lakewood's tree retention policy in favor of preserving our remaining Gary oaks. There are only three percent of the original old growth oaks left, and it's not acceptable to cut them down and properly prune them or mutilate them. We need to do, do the right thing and save these trees. We cannot afford to lose any more of them. The Gary oaks are the only native oak tree species in Washington. They're drought resistant, fire tolerant, and many are over a hundred years old. Intact Gary oak ecosystems have become rare. These unique ecosystems provide food and housing to birds, mammals, and most importantly, pollinators. These ecosystems are also the home of almost a hundred species of wildlife at risk for extinction. Along with wildlife, they also shelter a wide variety of native shrubs and ground cover. Their branches and limbs host dozens of kinds of lichens, mosses, and liverworts. The trees produce inch-long acorns, which are sustenance to birds, squirrels, deer, and even bears. There isn't a single Gary oak tree that isn't occupied or utilized by wildlife. There are so many more reasons to not cut them down, but three minutes is not enough. So, the city of Lakewood municipal codes designates the Gary oaks as a substantial tree, and there is, what, as far as I can tell, a protocol that should be followed when cutting them down or assessing to see if they should be cut down. I don't believe this is being followed. Last year, almost thirty permits were issued. How many trees per permit were cut down? Were all the trees assessed, or any trees at all assessed? Lakewood's code says, damaged or diseased trees will not be considered significant if, following inspection and a written report by a registered landscaped architect, certified nursery professional, or certified arborist. Does the city use someone's? Does the city use someone specifically from any of these fields? Is any of this being tracked? Were all of the permits issued for diseased trees that were deemed not significant? Gary Oaks should not be cut down if they are healthy. We cannot cut down a hundred and fourteen down for a warehouse. They should not be altered without a professional to inspect them. How is the city tracking these permits? Are these trees being assessed and inspected? The state of Washington considers them to be protected. Other cities such as Tacoma, Oak Harbor, and Squim have strict ordinances to protect these trees. Lakewood needs to follow and do the same. We need a new Gary Oaks preservation code. Thank you.
Next on the agenda to speak, Dennis Hough.
Now, can you hear me? I'm Dennis Hough, currently living in Sioux Falls, used to live in Lakewood. And for many years, I used to show you videos of disasters, hurricanes, and windstorms and whatnot. And I learned that there's a great difference between the way different cities and states handle disasters. And the way I look at, you're just a small little suburb in a big area of metropolitan crazies. I think that your future is baked in to a bigger and bigger homeless population, because the kind of drugs that the cartels are bringing in here are often laced with fentanyl, and that doesn't lead to mental illness. That leads to physiological debilitation and reduction. So a person is permanently, permanently handicapped for life. If you want to see these things change, you're going to have to work to make sure that the Trump policies at the border, all of them are reinstated, as well as the wall. Then you've got some of your own policies, like your sanctuary state policy. That needs to be done away with. And then you must get an attitude of cooperating with all law enforcement, all levels, to stop the drug trade. You'll never stop it completely, but the way you're going, you certainly won't reduce it, and you guarantee its permanent growth. Now, it was rather odd to me that you had a lot of people that were in power, and you, they screwed up with the riots, let all kinds of damage happen. They're totally incompetent compared to other governors. And then you went and rehired them, re-elected them. So I guess you've, you've set yourself and your future. You know, when I'll be listening to you, trying to get grants in the future for your transportation, that's going to be a lot of Santa cans. You'll have to learn on, learn how to bid on toilet paper by the ton. You know, usually these homeless people don't move unless sanitary situation gets so bad, they move. But there are other things you've got to deal with. You've got to get the lawsuit, limited liability, because, you know, moving these people, they see the city as deep pockets. You've got a lot of things to work on. And I don't see any great leadership anywhere in the Puget Sound that can stand up to all the opposition and all the crazy ideas, return law and order, return, stop talking, defunding police. That is the stupidest, dumbest thing that anything, anybody could ever come to. I support the police and support your police. And look at the cases. Look at how difficult that job is. And get back to supporting police and quit whining every time somebody gets arrested. I'm sure that oftentimes, they deserved it. But anyway, yeah, your future, to me, is headed downward. Thank you.
Next, on the, see, there's still interest, it's the telephone number two five three nine six four two one seven three.
Deputy Mayor, that was June and Wheeler. You just not want to provide public comments as hand was raised from the proclamation.
Very good, thank you. Those are all the individuals that I see that line up to do virtual. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Let's see your name and rest is correct.
Well, last time I was just not able to, because it was a form I didn't understand. Anyway, General, that's, why did I get the one?
Yeah, I can introduce your name, sir.
General, I R S.
Thank you. Residents, have us, do you hear what clear?
Lakewood. So, couple things. The trees may be preserved, not cut down. It's really stupid to even think about a tree now. Y'all got too much concrete out of the yard. We need a little less scat, scat sacks. Second, body camps. Two of you must be killed as homeless. So fuck y'all. Third, defund the police. Black man has to work better, all bounces to be, black lives matter, get it straight.
Good evening, my name is Christopher Esteban. Like I said before, I'm the president, you know, co-founder of Rise Against Racism, nonprofit in Washington State. First thing I want to talk about is the trees, of course, you know. You know, I think it's time for y'all to become heroes. Like you said, look at how many other citizens care about these trees. So we can't wait till y'all stand up and say, guess what, guys? We're saving your trees, and everybody's going to clap, and you're going to be heroes. You know what I'm saying? Y'all might not do everything right, but y'all can do that right. You know, the next thing is, I live down the street from Western State Hospital. I live down the street from Western State Hospital. So I always hear about these people that escape. And when we try to tell y'all that more criminals means more people, you know, escaping and things like that, Jason Weller keeps saying, oh, we're going to have the, you know, top of the line security. But are you going to be able to guarantee our safety? And then now, what do you know, what are you going to do when it, when it does happen? You know, your words are not going to keep us safe. And I, I love the way that woman said, we can live somewhere else to put this place, these things, that y'all got billions of dollars to build it. You know, some of it was no Jerry, you know, Gary Oaks trees. And then, what else? So many things, man. Y'all have to, y'all have to come out to us. Y'all have to talk to us and let us know about these things, you know, like, like my wife even said one time, maybe I should book a party, you know, every couple of months. Let's get together, you know, I like to drink a little bit, you know, and chill. And that lets us all relax and get to know the real, you know, people. Look, remember, only five percent of the population even cares about anything. So we should get that five percent together and work together, you know, there's no reason. We're not enemies. We're all Americans here, right? You know, y'all are proud to be American, and I'm proud that y'all are proud to be American. This is my motherland. You know, that flag represents everybody who died, you know, ninety million people that died, you know, in my motherland. So every time I see it, you know, saying, I pledge allegiance to my flag. You get what I'm saying? This is my country, my motherland. And I'm excited to be part of this, you know, saying, I want to join a couple of your committees, things like that. And I hope y'all will let me and my wife, of course, join those committees. We want to be part, we want, we want more things on our resume. We want y'all to know that, you know, we're buying a house here. We, we were two hundred plus, you know, because, you know, the housing. So we got two hundred, you know, in home equity, two hundred thousand. And yeah, if you gentrify the city, we'll get two hundred more thousand, well, half a million bucks. But that's not the point. The point is there's poor people out here, and we think about them too. You know, my, my Lord Jesus Christ taught me to help the poor, to save, you know, to love all of our people the same. You know, so, and I want to just say thank all of y'all for all the time that y'all spend and dedicate to this city. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Margot Salazar, and I've lived in Lakewood since I was in middle school. I'm now an excellent soul. Mr. Bookie, I attend in school, middle school and high school with your daughter. Her and I were very close friends. And I would like to say, I believe for issues that you should also care about in regards to Western State Hospital, as I'm also living closely. I live down the street, and I remember in high school, having to go to Laka as a work patient, so scared. I also care about the trees, and I also care about the body camps, our offices. I may be nineteen years old, but I care about my community. I can't sit here and watch younger generations have to suffer for things that the people of the past did not handle correctly. Our city needs help. Look out the window, Ray. This isn't a Lakewood that I would like to be tuned to see. I'm worried about the community. And I'm nineteen years old, should this be a burden I'll have to take on in the future? This isn't a city I'm going to want to settle down in in the future. This isn't a city where I can hold the hot lunch kids and live for the rest of my life. And these issues are a constant change. These are safety issues. These are climate issues. These are issues that a nineteen-year-old shouldn't have to be worrying about. Thank you.
All the individuals signed up or raised their personal hands to speak for the common prayer? Are there any other individuals who wish to address council, this night?
I think you moved second, Salazar, and I thought it was beautiful, I'm in there. I live on the home in Lakewood. And Salazar is former local parks coordinator. Giving my administrative potential to us. My daughter ended on a journey, one for a co-lit, you know, who's called a right, like it's called a plan woman, began. And I'm a run, I'm a run council, and everybody's up to me, those compassion and citizens. Like, as you said, we gladly sit down and get creative and think. We have been touring the United States past few months, as I've worked for a moment in the district now, but it's getting very aggressive in how to burn voices to the people. They are always shining us. Cities around us have the exact same problem we're facing. They are always shining us. They are willing to sit down and stop saying this is the left, this is the right. This is a human being issue. People living on your steps out there, they're unholmed, growing more and more and younger and more every day. And if you can't understand what that's like, then you need to talk to somebody. Talk to me. I've been there. I was a single mom, as an educator, barely able to feed that child. She had no idea how close poor to the brink. I was supporting your community with school supplies and all the things they knew, and we ensure every child felt welcome in the classroom while I could meet. Now, I'm in a very easy position where I'm helping other people, and I'm out there hitting streets, offering the warm weekends. Are you all? Because if you're not a child, you need to do so. Talk to them, get to know their stories. And two master's degrees, and I know any day I could have known that out there. We are not unique. But like everybody has said recently, we have the chance to be unique. We're a small place in the upper dozen, you know. Well, suddenly, I have a choice. I can't continue on a foster parent who's turning out amazing young girls who have been victims, trafficked, that's already a seven-year-old, who needs to do better, who needs to be better. Body camps are non-negotiable.
Any individuals who wish to address council, try? Any other members of the audience who want to address this, talk to the common prayer? If not, I thank you all very much, so we'll prepare the public comment very closely soon. Thank you. We now turn to the seventh agenda.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. B, motion number two thousand and twenty-one dash forty-two, authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Washington State Department of Ecology to accept the grant in the amount of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars for the pollution prevention assistance program. C, motion number two thousand and twenty-one dash forty-three, authorizing the execution of an agreement of parametrics in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars for the JBL More Than Access Improvement Project. D, motion number two thousand and twenty-one dash forty-four, authorizing the execution of a near local agreement with the State of Washington Department of Social and Health Services in the amount of ninety thousand for Western State Hospital Police Protection. E, motion number two thousand and twenty-one dash forty-five, authorizing the execution of a near local agreement with the State of Washington Department of Social and Health Services in the amount of six hundred and twenty-one thousand for the Western State Hospital in partnerships. F, motion number two thousand and twenty-one dash forty-six, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with fuel recreation or L C in the amount of twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eight dollars for the Fort Surcom Hard Hauling and Sprinkled project. G, motion number two thousand and twenty-one dash forty-seven, authorizing the purchase of body worn cameras. H, motion number two thousand and twenty-one dash forty-eight, reappointing Peter Marsh to serve on the American Lakewood Management District Number One Advisory Committee through June second, June thirtieth, fourth. I, motion number two thousand and twenty-one dash forty-nine, appointing Kyle Alomar and Terry Hendrick to serve on Lakewood's private vice report through May first, two thousand and twenty-four. J, motion number two thousand and twenty-one dash thirty, reappointing Alan Hart and Todd Wolf to serve on the Public Safety Advisory Committee through August sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. A, I've expired the office of the City Clerk, one American Lakewood Management District Number One Advisory Committee meeting minutes of February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, and two funding commission meeting minutes of June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which you'd pass on, or which is true, consent agenda?
This is Deputy Mayor, first, the first one's number forty-seven, American law.
Your asked to test, hopefully, consent agenda. If not, we will seek a motion to approve an adopted consent agenda minus item G. I'm excited. It's been moved by Councilmember Moss and second by Councilwoman Bookie to be adopted, consent agenda as presented, minus item G. Is there any further discussion? And for the discussion, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda as seen, signify as you higher?
Aye.
Close. Consent agenda minus item G, instead of adopting after item G, motion number twenty-one dash forty-seven, authorizing the purchase of body worn cameras. Is there a motion to adopt before we go to the discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Fong, and moved by second by Councilmember Moss, and the dot motion twenty-one dash forty-seven, start.
I agree, very much appreciate it, Collins, eight first night, we're already on the council night. Everything that's been said, I hope these will provide vital, um, knowledge of community policing. And by our actions tonight, it starts in the Lakewood with the first police safety statement, county's, both dash cams and lots of things. So I'm really, really excited about it.
Thank you very much. For comment by a member of council? Mark, you would just like, after this comments, this is investment we are making, and our police today became director of the nation of our police departments. And into our, in line with this motion, and are supported by the investment, not only for the safety in terms of community, the safety of the officers of all, through the police. So thank you all for bringing this forward. Ready for the discussion? All those in favor of motion number twenty-one dash forty-seven, authorizing the purchase of body worn cameras, by the seat like, signify as you say aye?
Aye.
Can you vote? Motion twenty-one dash forty-seven, adopt. We now turn to regular agenda. Before I, I go there, I just want to improve those, to took the time tonight to speak to us. Your comments, Matt, I hope you know that we adopt the body cam legislation tonight. And this part where the Western State Hospital issue is going to be addressed during the city manager's conference tonight. We should update whoever we are on the process. As you know, Western State's own bias, Lakewood's own operated, that Department of Social and Health Services is not our project. It's time to be permitting the agents to move the updates tonight as the justice of the public. As the Congress has been receiving, as the. It's moving without dates, I mean, as the justice of public, as the Congress and the receiving, as the permitting agency. This is a DSHS, state of Washington project, not one of ours. But we understand the concerns, will address some concerns we receive late tonight. On to the regular agenda, Matt. Resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero nine.
Resolution number two thousand and twenty one dash zero nine, authorizing the issuance of a conditional certification of acceptance of tax exemption within a residential target area to one quarter fund LLC.
Thank you. And for this, I will call on our panel members who are in the now. Give us a little overview.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. This evening, I'm here to present this resolution to approve the city and toward into agreement for multi-family tax exemption for the one hundred plus street projects that we discussed last week. As a part of our meeting, we have prepared additional financial details as well as outline the benefits of this tax exemption. We'll have the developer as well as the state of Lakewood that information is included in the packet this evening. Upon reviewing the application plan set, we have found that the project is compliant with Title III of the Lakewood Municipal Code and do represent a rule of the resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions for? If not, I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash zero nine. So. It's been moved by Councilmember Rand, second by Councilmember Del, we adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash zero nine. Is there any further discussion left us? Let's press it. Yeah, Deputy Mayor, I. I didn't ask them, now there, there you go. Information provided today, there is the the summary of the public least involved and taken, well, the and not discussion about the fact that the need for a that's a point. So here's again. DSHS to actually forward, we'll present it with quite a bit of the input of the city of the way it's gone. But in the in the next steps. In our right, we include the things that, this is a process thing, any other moving, there's gamers rather than the big council.
Council, there is more of this condition for Western State Hospital, but I'll give the city manager update. What time's your question? Yes, for that project, we will be, once the actual information has been issued for the master plan update, it will also require very many some moving.
Anything? Let's go through this. Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero nine, before we set our motion, so. Message any further discussion on that particular resolution? All the question, all those in favor of adoption, signify by a stand by. Any votes? Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero nine, extend adopt, we now turn to resolution twenty twenty one dash ten, Matt.
Resolution number two thousand and twenty one dash ten, authorizing the execution of a government for transport, the establishment of a regional coalition known as Southside Housing Affordability Partners.
Thank you very much. And for this, we will call on our planning members to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. In your packet, starting at page one thirty, there are a number of documents related to this issue. And as you know, you've had a number of discussions about it, both study sessions as well as conversations with representatives and performance for shape. Most recently, there was a discussion had with County Executive Damire, Mayor Wooders from Tacoma and Mayor Penner from City of Warding. And so what was included in your packet tonight is an agenda bill which explains the adoption of a resolution saying that the city of Lakewood is in fact intending to join SHAPE. And then attached to that, there's information, background information about the steps to get to today with the SHAPE organization as well as what's to come. There's still an unknown exact number that Lakewood will need to be paying in order to participate. It depends on the total number of jurisdictions that will ultimately join. And then there's also information in there about all of the various regional housing efforts that this organization might engage with. So whether it's spending of ARPA funds in collaboration with multiple jurisdictions, whether it is dealing with emergency housing and other federal funding sources for that, we'll see. But it'll be up to SHAPE once it's organized and has its leadership elected. That executive committee will be setting as a general for the first few years at least. So I'll happen to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All questions? But I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash ten. Or seven.
Seven.
It's been moved by Councilmember Moss and seconded by Councilmember Fox, that we adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash ten. We're going to discuss. Well, let me just say that I'm one of the ones who figured this housing affordability is a secret condition in Southside, as we all know. This is not a good for us to be part of the solution as a regional organization. So we see solutions hopefully and we'll collaborate on on a solution that will be funding, I think, this, solve some issues of the office, of the office, so. For the favor. Uh, any further discussion inside one? Um, those in favor of adoption, resolution twenty twenty one dash ten, signify by a stand by.
Aye.
Close. Resolution twenty twenty one dash ten has been adopted. Thank you, Miss Spear. Now it turns to unfinished business. Mr. Calvo, I mean, finish this to the best. You have this to the best. So then we'll turn to reports by the senior, this course you have, Mr. Calvo. Just making this education there, two items, Mr. Calvo, vote press. One will be the American Rescue Plan Act program status update. And the other will be Western State Hospital, that's updated, so, similar for free information, Mr. Calvo.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor of the council. Uh, first I call upon, uh, to you, um, I'm sure, as you said, to keep the stats part, where there are, there are the yeah. I mean, this was, that could be, um, the world, so, that's one. So that is.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience as we work through the technology, Mr. Deputy Mayor and Council. So Tiffany Spear, one more time, I just wanted to provide a couple of slides for information about the American Rescue Plan Act and where things stand right now. As you'll recall, the city has been allocated a total of almost fourteen million dollars. There's two tranches or half and half in twenty one and twenty two that will be available to the city, both at about six point eight eight million dollars.
We will try the screen one more time.
So, follow. Right, well.
Oh, that's fine.
So, this is the fourteen, uh, questions. So, probably.
There we go. Alright.
Great, can you see it?
Yep. Alright, so, the ARPA allocation to the city of Lakewood divided in half for twenty one and twenty two. The rules of the game very fundamentally are that the monies have to be committed or there has to be a clear description of how the city would spend the dollars by the end of twenty twenty four. And the funds have to be exhausted by the end of twenty twenty six. Busy slide here, but what you see on the left hand side are the categories within the American Rescue Plan Act of how local dollars can be spent. And then on the right hand side, you'll see from the March twenty seventh retreat, what the city council identified as its policy priorities. First of all, recognizing that ARPA is intended for long time, forward looking costs. Secondly, that there would be a one percent set aside of funds for community service advisory board allocation for human services. Third, that the city should not be duplicating expenditures that are available or resources that are available at the county, city, or federal, sorry, I mean, state or federal levels. And so the idea here is to be pretty nimble and creative in filling the gaps for where the dollars aren't otherwise available for residents and businesses. And then fourth, that there should be community engagement, and that's been ongoing. So part of what I'm pretending this evening is just a status report on that to get an idea from as many businesses, residents, providers and partners within the city that we can of their feedback and thoughts about how the ARPA dollars could best be spent. As we move into the end of July now, I mean, into August, what you see up here is a status report. Lakewood, the city website has a page now and it's simply cityoflakewood.us/ARPA, which is live and actually includes a pretty basic survey. Anybody who can go there is able to answer three questions and the last one is just completely open ended. It's simply, what do you think these dollars should be spent on? And so we're getting a wide range of response with that. The information about this is also being provided to farmers markets and summer concert series attendees. We've already done presentations or conversations at the list of groups that are listed there under outreach completed. And then we have additional entities and stakeholder groups that will be meeting between now and August fourth. We do have now have an ARPA intern hired who started a week ago and has already engaged with some of the meetings that we had over the last year, sorry, last week. And then he's also working with myself, Blackamute, Jim Capriva and Ryan Montrezas, very subject matter supervisors, if you will, for the information he's preparing to bring back to you. As far as collaborations go, the city is already supporting the Clover Park High School's Youth Borders for Change in Summer. There is an ongoing review at the staff level at this point, but it'll be coming to you soon regarding the potential purchase of a hotel in collaboration with Tacoma and Pierce County at eighty six Cent Hosmer. And then also Lakewood has committed to the leadership at the county that it is interested as a jurisdiction in looking at potential ways to collaborate with the county as well as other cities for various uses of the ARPA dollars. So far, with the two meetings that have been had about this sewer and water infrastructure, emergency affordable housing unit construction, and then small business assistance are the items that keep coming to the top in terms of that collaboration. And then there's also the city of Lakewood talking with Pierce County regarding several economic development projects, including a small business association, a small business administration by the community navigator program, where the county is actually applying for a grant through the SBA in order to be a county level hub of learnings, navigating programs are being turned. And then there would be six to eight spokes to that, some of which within the city of Lakewood itself to help against small businesses here. So, so far, and none of this has been committed other than the Warriors for Change dollars and the community service advisory board dollars, but the rest of the money is up there as well, having been talked about so far. Facility improvements regarding HVAC and bipolar ionization for airflow over time. Again, the, the purchase of a hotel, and at this point, the discussion is Lakewood would be contributing a million dollars toward that. And then the body cameras as well, that program being funded through ARPA as is allowed over that act. So where we sit now is we're finishing up our community engagement efforts over the next few weeks. August twenty third, there'll be a much more in-depth presentation brought back to you. And at this point, it looks like we would need to draft a resolution for your consideration that would identify policies as well as how you may want to be spending the funds, either in just the first tranche or both tranches. And then there'll be a hearing on that resolution to seek additional public feedback. If you need it, there would be a study session on September fourteenth and then on September twenty first, some council is scheduled to take action. Regardless of all of this, there will be amendments to the city's budget because of the ARPA allocations to the city that will be coming forward separately later this year. So with that, we happy to answer any questions.
I'll open up the questions that I have a lot for some, I'll go back to page, permit? I know it's early in the discussion, but the contribution, the purchase of company, homeless shelter. Um, I've had conversations with some of our county customers on this issue as a collaborative approach. And I don't think that there's been any identification of allocation, the contribution, even further about the sample, it's just a million dollar contribution. We have dedicated number of beds for folks like me transitional or homeless housing.
That is the basic condition to Lakewood participating, yes. And if you look at the numbers of money is put toward the purchase, they are roughly proportional given the total number of ARPA funds each of the jurisdictions is receiving. So Lakewood at one million, Tacoma at five or somewhere around five million, and the county matching that. And so what we're hoping is that, and I've had initial discussions where this has been communicated to me, that there would be a certain number yet to be determined. Beds reserved for Lakewood residents or people need until a certain period of time in life. If they're not filled, then they would be open for other individuals.
But approximately, you need beds in that facility.
Correct.
And I've heard it also that they're going to try, they, or maybe folks are going to be, are going to try to include some services within the facility for folks to be residing there.
Correct, yes. And the intent is for at least several years, it would be in order to see how, but eventually it is intended to convert it to permanent support of housing. So there will be benefit for those that would be living there long term once that happens as well.
Fantastic. And I see that the body cam cameras we just passed are going to be funded, it looks like, for the ARPA.
Uh, there is a question as to how much the total would be, but yes. And the reason there's a question is because there's still that state legislative dollar allotment that it's yet to be determined how much exactly the city will see.
But that comes in these months to be used for the ARPA.
Correct, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, Mr. Bokey? So this is a, is a follow up on, on, with how, that like, operational costs, are we, are we thinking about that in terms of operational costs?
I have not heard back yet from the city of Tacoma if they changed their mind because originally it was indicated they would handle that. Um, what was voiced to me initially was that the city of Lakewood wanted to have beds set aside each day. That there would be the cost to do that, that Lakewood would be responsible for. So that's just a small part of their total operations. And so that's where I've been with the discussions. But more to come, we're going to be talking later this week at the Satwell.
And, and initially, it's part of the question, operational costs, or?
Correct, yes.
So, we would be okay for twenty twenty four, maybe twenty twenty six?
If it came to that, yes.
But by then, it would be over, for the support of housing, so we probably.
Yeah, the intent at this point is through the end of twenty twenty three, it would be emergency housing, beginning in twenty twenty four, they would make a change, permanent support.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And so then my next question is when we initially, and I, and I appreciate this, this synopsis. There were, there were more items, like water, parks.
Yeah.
That was one I remember. We don't talk to those or at least try to stay up right.
Uh, no, Councilmember Bokey, these are simply ones where specific numbers of dollars have started to be discussed and items have been brought before you, for instance, the body cameras, to me, and the community services advisor allocation, and also the funds submitted to the borders for change for our municipal law and discuss. There's many more that you as a council identified, and there's also many more ideas we're getting from the community engagement, which will all be brought to you now. There's many more that you as a council identified, and there's also many more ideas we're getting from the community engagement, which will all be brought to you in hours.
And then, should we run a call the other day, business assistance?
The idea is to collaborate as much as possible with Pierce County about that. So whether it's specifically that small business administration, community navigator program, whether it's the BIPOC, Community Business Assistance Program, or just the other assistance that the county's economic development department will be able to provide to businesses, we would be funneling people to them as the experts. So it would be a matter of Lakewood having the resources to be able to do that, not just duplicate that, their programs.
Mr. Bokey, any other questions?
Brad Stetter. You know, on the, if the council, the movement established a homeless shelter by purchasing that fell, they're operating in my opinion and getting an agency to fund it as a shelter. That is something that's been brought up frequently as a boy, yeah, Lakewood version itself. But we gotta have a home, but next thing, yeah. I'm trying to understand, we do that, why we're only looking to do that for two years? And then, so they would cease to be functioning as a shelter and be back. Where Lakewood, not with a shelter option or find itself in a street home situation. Or is there a plan if this converts to eventually permanent supportive housing? Something to establish a next iteration of a shelter in a lot of meetings.
There are many ways to answer that question, Councilmember Brad Stetter. First of all, the specific purchase of this hotel, discussion began between the city of Tacoma and Pierce County, and Lakewood expressed interest after they had begun the discussion to help contribute in order to get those beds reserved. That purchase will probably go forward regardless of whether Lakewood would ultimately participate, but this is an opportunity to get some access to emergency housing over the next several years. The idea here is to deal with the very short-term ARPA dollars as a way to create these new housing, emergency access units for several years. The question about whether Lakewood has other housing capacity, be it the permanent supportive type or the emergency shelter type, separate and apart, that could be the community, or excuse me, continuum of care that Lakewood is part of, again with Tacoma and Pierce County. It could be working with LASSA, it could be working with other nonprofits that might bring those units to the city. That's not part of this discussion right now. This is strictly that hotel that was first identified by the city of Tacoma and Pierce County.
Oh, but would it be possible, along the major things since it's there, doing the ARPA dollars that we have until 2024 to commit them in 2026, spend them to go after a more permanent homeless shelter situation, albeit perhaps smaller than this, but that would be a permanent asset.
That would be entirely within the council's discretion to decide that, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, if I could, Mr. Deputy Mayor, there's many ways to organize what's going to be coming to you, and I keep trying to figure out how to do it the best way possible because there's four different categories within the act, how money can be spent. But within those categories, there's a lot of discretion. And some of it can be done independently by the city of Lakewood, some can be done with other governments, and some could be done with nonprofits or other agencies. So trying to get that to you in a, as understandable a way as possible, it's going to be, you know, wiggly lines all over the place in turn. But yes, to your question, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions, Council, from the session? I assume plenty more, you still have a call?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, mixed up with all of our current maintenance, we've been up in Western State Hospital, and you guys, yeah, reminded us of a city project. It's actually a project that's proposed by the state, it's a part of social and human services, that's a, you know, community health governor, also funds for local, that's a, so, our, pushing for most of this is a permitting agency from a development regulation. So with that, you know, good to see you.
Hello again, Deputy Mayor of the Council. Moving on to Western State Hospital now. As I'm sure you all recall, in 2020, we received a much awaited update to the Western State Hospital master plan. We went through a comment period last year, we received some comments, sent a correction letter, and just received resubmission in May. As a result of the items from the resubmission, we decided to do a second public comment period in order, because they've been worth a cure since the first one. And although the large items remained consistent from the first iteration plan to the second, we received a great deal of public comment the second time around. A summary was provided in your council packet to revisit the master plan items. There's three large items that potentially increase capacity that the master plan is going to run. The first is a new 350 bed for our hospital in the property. In order to construct this, it will require the demolition of several existing buildings on site. The second is a new 18-bed residential cottage at the child study treatment center. And the third is a new community residential treatment facility, or RTF, of 48 beds. And this is contingent on the completion of a parallel study and the governor's orders aims to install several of these RTFs throughout Washington state. Additionally, long-term, the state has identified a goal to transition the hospital to serve primarily forensic patients for those that have been processed through criminal justice system and fewer civil community patients. So today, civil community patients make up a majority of the 850 patients on-site at Western State Hospital. So this will be a change from what we see today operationally. From June 7th to July 10th, we did hold that second pre-threshold determination public comment period. We received 68 public comments. We have hired Burke Consulting in order to assist us with reviewing all of the application materials to evaluate our options for CIPA and the threshold determination as well as future processing of the master plan. DSAHS and Western State Hospital have also indicated that they intend to provide responses to some of the public comments. So with that, once we receive those responses, we will move forward with issuing the threshold determination likely in late summer or early fall. Once CIPA gets issued, we will have a 21-day appeal period. And at the conclusion of that appeal period, depending on the threshold determination itself, the city will enter into the next phase of review, which includes a public hearing before the city's hearing examiner. At this juncture, the public will have at least two additional opportunities to provide a comment prior to any adoption of the master plan. Any questions?
So on that, we'll leave it on the question, obviously, we asked a lot of comments, I have concerns over added notice or opportunities to comment. So the outside consultant that we hired, this person's process will be responsible for proposing a more robust advertisement to solicit public comment? They didn't know, we should probably do it.
At this, at this point, we have not identified outside of the future comment periods for the Western State Hospital master plan, facilities plan. So as part of CIPA, what's required under state law and municipal code is a 15- to 30-day common period. We have had two of those for this, this project, for the threshold determination. And our code also allows for us to do, or requires that we do another prior to the public hearing. So we, we made our best effort, I would say this first go-around, at trying to have a broad outreach, but we certainly can extend that even further when we move forward with.
We mail those cards out to angry residents since last time we were handing them to you.
Yes, we did. Our typical, our standard noticing is 300 feet, we went a thousand feet. In our first set of public comments last June, we actually also included in the Lakewood connections, which went to every household.
Okay, very good. I still want to make that clear, because I do appreciate that reaction, but beyond the standard 300 feet within, or maybe Western State went to a thousand, all households within that previous, as well as publication of the paper.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for his panel on site, Mr. Bokey? You guys have anything to add?
A couple of comments and, I guess, pause that question to see if we made awareness. I actually got to go on tour of Western State Hospital facilities. And during that discussion, they indicated that we don't have up there the new map. The new forensic hospital, which was originally there, shown on the map, be very close to central provider, so silver, I guess, that we can do. South, west corner of property, because now we need to move east to where the quad is. They're going to guide down, it's just civil, they fall south, something. So that's, that sounds like that's getting it done. We deserve to remember issues kind of having over. Two-way back with this legal issues, to submit an opposite against town judges, all through, as you apparently, that's expressed some concerns about that. And then the, as you say, on the new community civil, they don't have plans right now. There would be an AS plan, but they don't have, any plans that have to do that. And I don't know about the new building, the child study center that just finished. But one thing I learned is people on the one side of campus have no control over what's going on that side. It's a child study and food centers, completely different runs, completely different people, and they're like, you will have to ask, right? So, so it really is a very, very different kind of thing, they're just like, no, about it. They did talk at length about trying to build these other facilities around the state, which I think for Lakewood is key. But right now, they didn't, they could identify that it's actually struggling, because I believe a 48-man facility in Clark County. And so, you know, they had heard of other ones, but there's no, there's no, nothing going on in that regard. So one of the, one of the things that I think, with public comments, and one of the things we ran into before, it's a real concern, and I know it's a concern to counties and also, is the civil flats, the forensic folks come in, they're there to stabilize the prosecutor back in Lockwood County, says, ah, really, wow. It wasn't that big of a crime, I'm not impressed. And then they, DSAHS is supposed to put the spokes back in that, I understand, where they tried. So when they tried to, of course, then these counties that resist like heck, or they either resisted, they're passive, they're passive, right? They, they fight the facilities, right? The state is worse than you take, so it's our house. This is the county, so much county doesn't have one, they don't do facilities, they don't have, you know, in a block, you know, in county. So there's all sorts of questions in those regards. Of course, don't end up in that, right? That like, you think living people in the civil and then leave them here in your example, right? Or try to run a little family, you know, it's a kind of place. I, I wouldn't be able, DSAHS are not doing this within balance towards, towards the city of Lakewood or Pierce County. But I do feel that a little bit of pressure is incredible on them. And so I kind of imagine these calls, maybe to Western State, hey, how is civil people going down today? Remember, the governor says this is zero by whatever date that, that they probably have. So then still hanging out there for this step, is that, you know, they're working on this plan, they're making all sorts of improvements out there. But really, the reality of the process on run is where you, where you send these folks? And, and there is some concern, and someone mentioned that she believed the increase in homelessness here in Pierce County, home, might be caused by Western State letting these folks out, putting them in situations like back at their house or some of their kind of living situation. They degrade, or they become sick because of poverty, and then they get kicked out and then they're out of this. And of course, Western State's like, hey, we're trying to help, so, so. There's still some major issues. I don't know how to make those issues about the flips, the forensic flips, the civil to have more. I think we have to do that in concert with the county and other, other city governments, that are, that are really end up exposed to it. Because there's several, people that include, reloading, and, you know, 48 beds. Clark County is, right, 48 beds, so he stands, the promise, the governor needs to strike down the street here. When Dope protest seven years ago, and he was really alive at that conference, sort of, I'm interested in the questions that, that, you know, here.
My, my comments are similar, I also, Bokey's, we, this is a CIPA review. Talking about a threshold determination, the ARPA services, the other threshold determination, so I think that might, as we continue to talk about this process, it break it down to more than average per, or for the state, they talk, okay. There are only certain parts of this that are probably are under our control. So Councilmember Bokey's comments, only control or influence the release plan of treated patients. Is that, is that what this part is about, is that something we're not controlled? We have provided commentary regarding that. And what we've found is there's not a lot of information that the state is currently able to share. And so instead, talking about control, what we've discussed a lot is capacity at Western State Hospital, how as they tend to make this transition, that capacity will change, because assuming that there are beds there and a need there, could the capacity increase? And so we, we have received additional answers on those topics. We have not received additional answers regarding where they will be discharged or released to. Maybe I have some chat at our, our events, or, or, as a CDP, we see, I was assuming that we were, things like, um, the permits, how many red, they are, extensions, same records versus actually how, like, so, how many workups to, to do that, so. I just want to make sure that we're, I understand there's a lot of motion history, I think, I don't know if I want to ask. For Western State Hospital, there are a lot of issues, but I want to make sure that we're, we're talking about what these are actually, that are. But I want to make sure that we're, we're talking about what these are actually, that are.
Mr. Speaker. What, whether it's within our control or not, I think it's clear that we have to, uh, to clearly what is, is their default or purpose of C P R review is in the next round of the conference, we see from the public, which is what we can actually, see best critical. I can tell you I was in a meeting, uh, Wednesday, an invitation of concerned folks in Oak Brook to attend this meeting with our twenty eight district, that's the representatives, Bransky and Levitt, and the members, many people, leaders of Oak Brook, some petition elsewhere. Really concerned about the civil side and what happens with regards to these patients. Because is there oppression that the state is just going to kind of open the doors and actually incentivize seats? Adult family home providers to receive, uh, for a fee, uh, many folks who have limited options to go elsewhere. And that is the real concern, I think, that we're, so how do we lead that concern in your articulated comments for this process, the next one? Speaking of the fire, I'm going to hammer that one, especially if it's under the communities. New concern, civil side.
The master facilities plan does provide us with an opportunity to address the operations of the hospital and the impact that that has on the community. Additionally, C P R does have some questions pertaining to land use and compatibility with adjacent land uses, though it hasn't traditionally been used for social environmental concerns so much as physical environmental concerns. But there is a little bit of room there, which is one of the reasons that we've now partnered with the BURB um, in order to be able to evaluate our actions.
This will have an indirect impact on land uses, in other words, presidential and, and that's the annual problem we've been grappling with since this became filed law since two thousand nineteen. And, uh, had action forward topics of assigned fees to all state judges were denying our relief. Uh, so that they could fully understand that the city of Lakewood has been behind the back, if it's best we could. But it's, it's a challenge. So, thank you for your good work. Continue to march forward and let's, you know, help this evolve and this manage, keep it together, so that something can change.
Mr. President.
Yeah, I think, and there, I think that as we, that we go forward and deal with the, the future items, and it's fine if we went all the, another public hearing for folks to express concerns, but if they're an option to public hearings are sort of one-way either communication. And I think that we have the comments that you have, the additional ones that go see, that they're an option to hold in conjunction with the S A S, a public meeting of where the answers to those comments would be out in there, or be some tangible, be some hidden thing in terms of discussion about the answers that will facilitate if they test forward, do that, because I think that that would have a much more positive impact and another chance, um, sitting in here and say something, have a body who just listened, because that's a little strange to do a direct public hearing. But, uh, no, it's sort of like what the Washington, the Department of Transportation agent did if you're dealing with point five five. And they had potentially open houses after they had all the concerns. They were thinking, okay, here, here's a chance for you as a public to come to a place and there would be charts or presentation. And people that would interact with the public a little bit about some of their questions. Uh, could be beneficial in this project forward. Uh, the other thing that I think that is not well understood, as I talked to folks in the community, is really what is the difference between civil and forensic? If people have the idea that forensic people are convicted criminals or have been found to be criminally insane, which is not to take clear, people haven't been convicted of anything, haven't had a trial yet, and they're, and they're in a presenting facility so that their mental situation can be addressed so that they can have a trial. Uh, whereas civil folks are sometimes long-term people with significantly diagnosed behavioral health challenges, okay? Who may or may not have challenges, the, the, the dangers themselves or other to be able to go and do that. I just think that some information about the difference between those two categories, and what a hospital or forensic hospital is trying to do for people, and what a civil commitment facility is trying to do for people, and the length of time that people are involved, so. Problem I, I don't. Generally, most of the actual incidents that have been a concern in the community, uh, where there have been something that has been troubling or serving that's happened, have actually been, most of it came from the civil commitment, uh, environment. Uh, and in long term, this is going to the suitable relocation plan of that activity, uh, this is going to actually be, uh, having less or giving approaching no civil folks. It's actually a safer environment for the community than, than currently having the mix. Um, and, uh, that, that new hospital, the new state of the art economy, do that in the best interest of patients, and can be in the best interest of the, the safety of staff and folks, folks that are there. So, uh, if you can consider providing the feedback to the community, even if many of the community are going to be interested in the answer that any one individual that's submitted, uh, that, 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 the answer that comes broad potentially. But putting it out definitely, uh, public meeting would be better than, uh, just meeting the minimum requirements.
Agreed. Somebody said, we should already, that might be jokes, you know. Any else? Now on that issue?
No, thank you for the opportunity. I had enough date. I, I'm hearing that.
Great opportunity for you. Chicago, ready for her? Well, thank you very much. Uh, with that, we solved the matter, of course, with City Manager, uh, we know, she was, she has comments, but I want to say welcome back. We'll see you then, see. Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, dear. Um, for the audience that participated tonight in front of the public, I just want to know, appreciate your comments. I mean, you've taken it from the heart, so thank you for supporting us. Um, and I appreciate all the feedback we've gotten from our councilors, from our senators, as to how limited we are to control some of the things that are happening that they are. And the other thing that I'm concerned with is the fact that we do what we can to give them that challenge. But it's not reach the people that are concerned. Tonight, some of the comments that were made, they were, that information had been out to some time. But how do we get to, we're going to need enough, we have to, we don't have a public newspaper or newspaper, so um, if they don't use the social media, the Facebook, and those things, we can't reach. So that's an issue that hopefully the government can resolve on some week. Okay, we'll learn from those, while we have a patient, we'll wait for them, but you know, as you said before, so. Um, so, uh, with that, um, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that out of the air, I'm missing Thursday night concert, but I'm very pleased with it. So, um, but I did have an opportunity to this morning to do a photo shop with Popeye's movie stream on the grill, and I got to see the grill for the first time. You are one to be impressed. It is absolutely stunning, but it gives to the artists where they are, and they, they are fantastic, so. The gracious governor's shots has been past my expectations. Thank you.
Yes, okay. Ms. Brody?
Yeah, I was a little sponsored at the party, really enjoyed it, uh, no wonder we're using it, and, uh, and a wonderful venue, and a straight, and and, uh, really good endurance, it's nice to be back. Uh, wow, you know, it's, it's like this, back in the light, um. Uh, we, we set up a piece on Western State that there's a lot of things to work out. I, I do, I do want to comment, the, the space efforts have been heroic when it came to trying to build four facilities. And they really are trying, this, this Western State, they just, uh, took the iceberg, they really are, that's, but the issue is, we're investing you know, after forty years of disinvesting, right? And almost fifty years of disinvesting, we started in nineteen sixty six, so. Not just no investment, but it's just, I get out of this. And so, um, it's going to take a time, and, and, um, and they might, might trip there, I mean, they really got, they changed the management structure, that's the state, so now there's a person running. They have, you will see, you know, those, I was just worried of all, right? Because it is, I'm actually very hopeful these are the operations, so, and there's just several others. Um, so they can classify those, those things. So, uh, you know, the state is trying, we do have, we do have more issues with books, sir. Uh, and, uh, anyway, I, I think obviously with that, uh, at least with the progress, we're also making a hard effort to, to, to process. I was at the special service this last week, and I think most of the march, and also, West Coast, that's a little bit of their whole. Um, and so, and then coming out, just saying, I haven't seen the first year, and said, nice resolution, it showed that it's, it's, uh, possible. Uh, they said a little bit, it's inside. But, uh, they have other hours. So, then, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, yeah, so. So that's all I have, yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilmember Farmer?
Mr. Mayor. While everybody was enjoying themselves at Thursday night concert, I was down before, one of the two of us had, we just got this kind of regional, regional council meeting, uh, where we heard a, a pretty good, uh, presentation on shape. And we were able to ask the initial questions about, uh, the control housing, or they're putting together, and I was able to get some of my, uh, last minute questions answered. So that was really helpful. And then we also, uh, went over a little bit of time on all of the detailed work, uh, on our current white lady policies. And another shout out to Ms. Mayor, she just does absolutely tremendous work, and I'm just super impressed with her, uh, eye for detail, or her ability to kind of suss out, um, all, all the things that, that just giant rooms, all of what officials want, and so, just fantastic job. Um, I also, the, I sent off the state sex offender council board and critique through our, our, our work um, on the registration of juvenile sex offenders, and if it's, um, advisable to make this sort of change there. And it does tie into the work that's going on at Western State, uh, per for, so it's been quite interesting. And then on the matter of, of Western State, I think it's really important that we can care, and table, uh, gradually. And it's up to us to help shape the area, we don't tell our stories, somebody else can tell them for us, so, um, it's helpful to do whatever it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Great segue, uh, Councilmember Farmer. I agree, there's so many other ways that we could take a look at communicating information out to our residents that meets their needs and gets them where they're at. There's so many ways, so I hope and encourage, um, that we do that. So we can educate people so that when they do come, they know what the state is able to do, and what we're not able to do, but also where we should help. So, thank you, Councilwoman Moss, for being that point. Um, on Thursday, I was able to go to the concert, I did not see you, that was something for the voting. You were not dancing.
Did you watch it?
You were in the mosh, but I did get a great photo of myself, I had a full eighties costume, and I was here for it, so it was awesome. I had to. And then also, I was able to attend, uh, the history museum reopening on Saturday, and Councilwoman Farmer was there, she described mentioning. So it was really great, I encourage everybody to go out there, check it out. Um, there's so much to see and do, and so much more work that I had no idea about, so it was, it was really good. So, that was it for me. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, uh, for listening this week. All of a sudden, we want to leave with a follow-up to Councilmember Moss's comments, I was trying to provide a little overview of some of the factual responses, much of what I'm on the tree issue. We certainly understand the angst and concern, but I think there is a respect, but perhaps, uh, the facts of what the status is and what we can do at this time. But I hear, uh, clearly, and we already correct staff to begin the process of a review of our tree reservation ordinance, so we can see that it makes sense now online, the new climate interview chapter, just, uh, was part of the conference, so I think that will be, uh, timely, and perhaps not time enough for some folks, but I want to encourage folks to hopefully give us some time to do it right. And I think we're going to have a shot at that with our planning commission team, look at it this next year, and whatever chance there is. More frequent public input, uh, take the dust and stick it. Um, there was a comment about one of the trees on the customer, or Southern Boulevard, which promptly can raise a question. Have you seen those, uh, gigantic, sort of prehistoric, like, posts or lighting or electrical lines? Their passive can look like blue and leaves, they're three feet tall, uh, and they're triangular shaped, they're amazing, so I wouldn't know that those were insane, but I haven't seen them. So. Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, that's something else, so, I'm sure it was something that, uh, in, it was on the, for, for fires. Right away there, or at least, I try to drive it back soon, but, uh, interesting. Um, in terms of busy stuff, I attended the bar interview, you probably have, or will have that off the street, that sit down and chat about partnership parks proposal, renovation of barns, so more follow on that. On Thursday, as I mentioned previously, I had a meeting at the request of, she says, the owner, to have a Zoom chat with our representatives of Levitt and Bransky about the Western State issues facing the neighborhood as a result of what they received to be caught in civil, in civil flips, and additional folks in their neighborhood, so. Uh, important issue for me, folks. On Saturday, I heard some, and the forms I attended, listens, uh, some book speakers, which is important, it's election season, so get educated about the issues. On Saturday, I went to the Lakewood History Museum as well, fantastic, great reopening, and lots of excitement generated information, it's fun to learn about our history, so, thank you. Mr. Speeds for being part of that, it's time to see you and all the folks that are out there. On Sunday, I had a chance, uh, an opportunity, required attendance to be at the Lakefield Gardens versus Swire. On Sunday, I had a chance, uh, the opportunity, required attendance to be at the Lake Old Gardens versus Swaray, if they call it, to raise funds for their veterans programs, where they are bringing veterans together, uh, they have moved, uh, psychological trauma impacts, and have found their way through healing, through art, and we raised over seventy thousand dollars on Sunday for that project. And it's, it's really fantastic to see many like that, that we support, our body tax money, actually do the old work in raising more operational funds for their own programs. And so they're having two more swarays, uh, later this season, we should attend, it's really great, for fantastic cause. So that is all I have, I'm Jake Wall, bring your dogs tonight, if there are no allies of the public side council, excuse me, is there?